I would like to call the Warrantz Board of Albany Meeting for Tuesday, February 20, 2018 in session. The first matter would be the public hearing, Section 425 sign regulations for ADM-93. Jack, I believe you can come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is a proposed revision to existing Section 425 sign regulations, ADM-93. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record in the missile code by reference, a public hearing notice on my P and Z report. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with three absent at the February 1st, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And the main item in this proposed revision is extending the existing commercial highway overlay district.
So moved, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Good evening, would you like to come forward and speak about the public hearing sections for the 425 sign regulations ADM-93? Please come with authority, you state your name and we'll give you five minutes to speak. But it is only on the public hearing section. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing section of the Warrantz Board of Albany Meeting and open the regular Board of Albany Meeting. And would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda.
Letter A is the regular meeting minutes from February 6, 2018, B work session minutes from January 23, 2018, on the revitalization of downtown, work session minutes from January 30, 2018, on the review of the 2015 building codes, and then approval of the following street overlay projects to be completed by Public Works Department. East Veterans Memorial Parkway on the north side, patching in the amount of $15,889 and the budget amount was $16,000. And Wolf Road, remove and replace sections in the amount of $34,975. The budget amount was $35,000.
Any questions, gentlemen? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alvin Ochs, City of Albany, Chur, Republic, please.
Alvin Deloitte?
Yes.
Alvin Schultz?
Yes.
Alvin Michelle Harvey?
Yes.
Alvin Costello?
Yes.
Alvin Hawk?
Yes.
Alvin Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item we'll be hearing from the public, we ask if you have something you'd like to share with us, you come forward, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak on the topic you wish to speak on. Not seeing anyone, we'll move on to the Board of Albany comments.
I had a couple of phone calls after, I guess after Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for trash and recyclable pickups that people hadn't, their trash and recyclables hadn't been picked up. And they were wondering, and I don't know Terry if the city got any calls on them or not, but they were wondering because of the new change in ownership from Wilson Meridian if there was an issue going on. Well, I called Wilson and just to let the public know, with Meridian, they have added a couple more drivers. So the people that were used to putting their trash and recyclables out like at eight or 10 o'clock in the morning and waiting, you know, when they normally got picked up at noon, they said the best thing to do now is have it out there at 6:30 in the morning because these guys are getting there a lot earlier. So that was the main reason they got missed last week was it was just, the trucks are running a lot earlier with the additional crews. So just to let everybody know about that, I didn't know if anybody else had gotten any calls on it or anything, but.
No, but it's good information.
Yep. So.
To add to that, I didn't get any calls, but I can assure you that they normally were getting down Walton Street at 10 or 11 o'clock and I heard the truck up there, 6:37, so that's very accurate, Alvin.
Sure agree. Any other comments?
Mayor, after last meeting, it was pretty clear that I didn't know what I was talking about, about recycling. So I want to clarify that obviously there's been changes made within the city on recycling and I'm pleased to correct the record in apparently we've got about a 41% activity rate of involvement in recycling, which I think is excellent. It is not free, however, it is included, as I understand, on our regular trash, monthly trash bill. So I'm excited after hearing that Zara, you did, Meridian is going to put more resources into our trash collection and I look forward to the time when they will provide the recycling toters. I think that could make a big improvement. So there is certainly more involvement and activity in recycling, I stand corrected. The second thing I just wanted to touch base on, you know, I know that several of you do this, but I would encourage all of the board and even citizens to drive around our community. I was surprised and pleased to see the number of new home starts that we have going on in the city. I talked to Jack about it a little bit, I think he said it's close to 15 building permits. Field of Dreams, I counted eight, either new homes or homes under construction, I guess it's still called Field of Dreams. And then behind the Kreider Center, there's five new homes under construction and I also hear that out at Walnut Hollow, there's a couple new starts. So that just, to me, is really exciting because we've not seen that really since 2007, 2008. So you couple that with what we're seeing at the Snooks site and it's really an exciting time, so as I'm concerned, it is for the city. So I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of what the new housing starts start to see.
A lot of the wonderful areas within the interchange is Rob.
Yes.
As noted that on our Facebook, and I guess I'll lead into the mayor's comments, if you haven't checked that out, they've done a phenomenal job progressing and showing the progress of our overpass, so thank you for the staff keeping on top of that. Really do appreciate it. And the aerial view gives a view like none other that you'll ever experience even from the highway. So I think a lot of people do appreciate seeing that. I think we need to just keep coming, that way people see it.
Great, let them know.
Any other comments? We'll move on to the discussion topic of fireworks in the city.
My one comment is, from my perspective, I don't think we need to go backwards and disallow fireworks in the city. I think there are sufficient people who support that and I do not believe that the recommendation that was made by Samantha Campbell should be approved. I think it's overly aggressive in terms of the amount of time. What I personally feel comfortable with, if the holiday is on a Friday or a Monday, to allow fireworks throughout the whole weekend. If it's on a Wednesday, then you allow fireworks on a Wednesday. If it's on a Tuesday, allow it on a Tuesday. That's the max that I can live with, I think. But it's, obviously it's up to the rest of us to decide, but that's where I'm at with the process.
I think the, I agree, I think the 12 p.m. to 12 a.m. proposal, if it falls on a Wednesday throughout the week because people are working, I think that's a bit too much, but accompanied weekend along the fourth wouldn't be too far off in my opinion.
When hours during those times are we looking at allowing the days that they are allowed? What hours?
Currently it's 5 to 10 and they're asking to expand the hours. I agree, to midnight, especially if it falls on a weekday, it's excessive for people who have to work the following day.
Could we compromise something earlier in the day? I agree, 10 o'clock at night is only long enough.
Well, I mean, she's proposing here noon to 12, midnight. I mean, I could go noon to 10, noon to 11. The earlier the day, it's not that able to deal with it, but the later.
That was my thought, noon to 10 would work.
I think the biggest chief complaint that she had was that when it falls on a weekday to allow them until 10 on a Tuesday, but not the Friday or Saturday prior to the fourth, such as the first or whatever day it would land on, is what they wanted to add on the weekends prior to the holiday, if I remember correctly, when she came to talk.
Yeah, from a staff perspective that has to deal with this, if we can keep the times consistent, and then if you want to add a day, then to make it simple that either it would be the third or the fifth, if the fourth is a weekend day or something like that, because it's easy to sit here at this meeting and decide that this all works, but it's the reality of staff who have to then make that happen. So I'd like to keep it as simple and consistent with hours as possible.
Okay, so if it's during the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, my thinking is we allow just the day of the holiday.
So noon to 10, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Then if it's, but if it's on the weekend, if it's on a Friday or a Monday or on the weekend, do more. You know, or no, I mean, that's just, that's the other consideration.
I know staff probably isn't going to like me saying this, but we're almost at the longest days of the summer. I believe it's what, June 21st is the equinox or June 20th is the equinox? They're still at long days. So is it dark at 9, 9:30 and you have an hour to shoot off fireworks? I mean, that's 11, I can see more. I get people, not I get it, but 11 for more of your bigger fireworks to be able to see them. I know a lot of people won't agree with that, but I mean, the purpose of the fireworks is to enjoy the fourth and the celebration with the fireworks.
A lot of your, like Innsbruck and a lot of those places, they didn't start their fireworks display until 9 or 9:30, so.
Supposed to 10.
You had that concern too, so.
I think that.
For that reason, I'm late.
I'm of the old persuasion, I'll try anyway, once, almost. I think there's a lot of credit, credence needs to be given to staff managing this. I think all your comments are well thought, but, you know, we've talked about this from a planning and zoning point of view and code point of view, you know, we sit here and make the rules and regulations and then sometimes we're surprised at the results. So I guess where I'm at, unless there's a rush to do this, I'd like to see a formal recommendation come of staff because you guys are the ones that aren't getting the calls.
Yep.
We'll hear about the next day. But I think last year was too short. And I think we had a lot of ignoring the timeframe. I was out at Ashen Meadows and I think there's a competition for fireworks out there. It's like a war zone.
Oh, yeah.
But they love their fireworks out there. So is there a way? Would you? Yeah.
Terry, didn't you say that really the staff wants consistency in hours? That's your big issue?
That would be the biggest help is to keep the hours consistent.
Right.
It's interesting, I had a conversation with Lieutenant Weber this afternoon and he shared something with me that I really had not heard from that perspective and he said it made their number of calls much less.
Yes.
Because there was this allowed time during which they weren't have to focus all these resources.
Correct.
But he also went on to say, and I certainly don't want to speak for you Lieutenant Weber, but a couple of days is an appropriate celebration time. More than that, it's his thought that it impedes on the rights of, I mean, go ahead and tell them what you told me.
I think it would be a peace disturbance issue if we extended it any longer than that for other citizens. Extending the time, like from 12 to 10:30 maybe would be okay. If you're getting past 11, you're running into the same peace disturbance problem. There are people that are gonna want to go to bed and have young kids. I think you're running into an issue and generating more calls there. So I'm good with, you know, a couple of days, the third and the fourth, or the fourth and the fifth. I would have no issue with that at all.
So we could maybe if it's on a Friday, do a Friday, Saturday. If it's on a Monday, do a Sunday, Monday, get your two days in and.
That would make more sense.
Yeah, as opposed to four days.
So I've been prosecutor for the city of Warrenton for 14 years enforcing our fireworks ordinance. The only concern I have about the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if it's on this date, it's on this date, it's going to be very confusing for the general public. It would be much better, I think, from an enforcement standpoint, and I think it's much cleaner, if we said the third and the fourth, or the fourth and the fifth instead of, and I totally understand the concern about a weekday. The problem is, is that's going to take a calculation and really probably an affirmative notification from our part as a city to let the average citizen know that, you know, 4th of July falls on a Thursday this year, so you can only shoot off fireworks on Thursday from this time to this time. I think the, I absolutely agree with the sentiment, but, you know, people don't, I think, they think they can shoot off fireworks. They, you know, we enforced this last year and they're like, well, I didn't know about the time at the end of it, or I wasn't sure about the exact time. We're going to have to go out and educate them every year if it changes from year to year based on the day of the week it is. So my preference from enforcement standpoint, I think it would be much cleaner if we wanted to expand. To expand the time, keep the times consistent, but make it the third and the fourth, or make it the fourth and the fifth, because we can really put that out there, really educate it, and I think we can throw a base every year of people knowing when they can shoot it off, the day before and the day of, or whatnot.
By no means is this a discussion topic, so we're not setting anything in stone or agreeing on ordinance, but so by all means, don't think that we have to decide something tonight. This is just for us discussion and giving the staff some guidance.
I mean, it would seem straightforward to pick two days, fourth, whatever it is, and then since that can fall during the week, maybe go from noon to 10:30 as opposed to later.
That would be, that would be much easier to do.
And so then it's just a case of having the staff deciding that framework.
This is when you have to stop on the day before, this is when you have to stop.
So is it the day before you allow the people to shoot off or the day after?
I think the consistence among the other cities that are up here on the screen here that are surrounding us are biased. The third and the fourth is more of a consistent day, I look at.
Well, we've come light years, there's a few of us that can remember, no fireworks allowed, ever. So I, you know, I really have to commend the city and, you know, maybe this change and try to accommodate the citizens and still be reasonable.
Well, I think some of this started when my daughter was doing the ride along program with the police and she picked the 4th of July to ride along and she said that officer was wasting so much time chasing down fireworks, she just thought it was ridiculous and said, Dad, can we do something about this? Because it was really a resource drainer from her perspective.
So from your perspective, Lieutenant, do you think 10:30 or 11 o'clock is too late?
I would say 10:30 is fine. If we get past 11, you're going to run into some issues with peace disturbance.
So 11 will be the top you would look at?
11 would be, yeah, that would be the top. And we'll strictly enforce the ordinance after that time closes. Which, so picking the third and the fourth would be the easiest and make that easiest for us. They will know that on 11 o'clock on the third, we're going to start enforcement again, 11 o'clock the fourth.
And I know we can come up with these things that we think will be perfect, but there'll always be adjustments. And I want to say that, and I don't disagree with the mayors, if we can set these guidelines, but we will need to educate the public every year.
Well, I think we'll, for at least the first several years, we'll have to maybe even develop a mailer saying it that goes out that we can, we can say, we issued it out to you, you know what it was, it was mailed out to every residence, or it was put out to every residence on the water bill, what be it. So we've stated what it is and we stated it clearly and defined.
I'm kind of curious, Counselor, how many cases do you prosecute for fireworks issues in the course of a normal season?
I think we had two or three last year where they actually showed up to court and there may still be warrants on it, but I would say on average, it was probably 10 to 15 summonses a 4th of July when we just fully restricted it. Now, the officers had discretion to write the ticket or not to seize the fireworks and just let the kids go. You know, I think you saw a lot more later at night where the officers were like, okay, this is enough. Or you also saw a lot of times the citation was written until they went back to the residence the second time was like, all right, I told you guys to stop. So I'd say 10 to 15, but last year I think there was two to three summonses that we actually saw in court.
For the record, if I remember right, it's talking about advertising, I think we had signs at almost every.
Yeah, we did. We had signs everywhere.
I thought it was cool. I don't know how you wouldn't though, when the hours.
Oh, I've seen some people drive by and ignore signs. Sometimes they're political, sometimes there are fireworks signs. Sometimes they become part of the landscape, not so much an educational tool. But, I mean, they work to a certain degree. Any other questions or discussion? So I know at least one, if not more, Alvin would like to hear if staff can discuss this and maybe get back with us on what they think a clear cut decision on. I know we're leaning towards the third, fourth, and no more than a hourly of 11 o'clock at night. It'd be interesting to see how early they'd like to start it during the day.
Okay, we'll bring something next meeting.
Thank you. All right, downtown improvements.
So the board, fireworks session on January 23rd with downtown property and business owners, and there were some recommendations that came out of that meeting. Department heads met and discussed some of those concerns at department head meeting the following day, and then set out to see which of those concerns and recommendations that we could come up with solutions to, to be able to bring to you. So staff has done investigative efforts and has some recommendations to address some of those things. So Guy is going to first talk about parking and the actions he's taken since that meeting to look at the parking concern down there.
On Market East Oak, the city purchased that property, we dug it out and put rock in and we have it rocked at this point, and we also have signs up for public parking. If you look towards the alley, there is a concrete wall that's up and it's not the whole length of the parking. So our plan is, because if we were to remove that, the hillside would have been too steep and you wouldn't be able to get no parking there. So with approval by the board, our goal is to extend that concrete slab, put some stormwater, a little bit of stormwater in there so the water couldn't run it off, and add to that parking, and then open up the entrance to the parking in the next budget and get that taken care of on that end of it. We can make that approach bigger to pull in and then we maybe get two or three more parking spots on the top of the hill where the concrete slab is. But we didn't want to, it was just, let's get it rocked, let's get some parking here and get the signs up. The signs were up, I believe, today, so they're up and in place.
You guys did a quick, really good job of making that happen so shortly after the city made the purchase. I drove around in it and it looks great. The only suggestion I have is that the entrance off of East Oak be made as wide as you can get it, because we are only going to have that one way in and out, as I understand it, right?
That's correct. Unless we come up with something different, like I said, our goal was just to get some rock in here. We need to maybe look, maybe another entrance, but I need to look at it a little closer because it's tight parking.
Yeah, but I think your logic in keeping that upper parking available for the businesses is rear parking off of Main Street probably makes sense, because I think you're correct. The transition down that hill is not feasible. So you were thinking of expanding that concrete further to the west and making more pull-in spots off of the alley.
And I think we might be able to get two or three more in there. I don't know, I didn't measure it and when I looked at it, there were just people were just parked there.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
And we'll have to change the sidewalk in that approach in the beginning.
You guys got online quick.
So any questions? Like if the signs were up, you put four signs up, like one that you pull in and on the corners. So I don't know, we thought about maybe putting one off of Main Street where the arrow showing public parking.
But you don't intend on putting an entrance off of Market Street, correct?
I don't police, I don't, because they're going to lose parking spots.
Because you really defeat your purpose, you're going to lose a parking spot then.
Yeah, I don't think you want to do that, you lose that parking area.
So that's, and we talked about maybe getting some on Market Street saying public parking with an arrow going down, you know, we just thought about that the other day. Let me put this, getting ready to put this signs up.
Good job.
So the second thing then was the security lighting in the alleys that I think one of the downtown businesses are concerned with. And Brody took that part of the project and Brad, share your thoughts with us. You're going to go point?
Yeah, I'm going to use a whip pointer, someone.
Put one in front of all of us.
Where some of the concerns were from that night. I guess first we'll start down here by, this is the old Schoenger Building here, this is the courthouse. We do have a light right in the middle, right here, Schoenger, or behind the old, yeah, Schoenger Building, there are, see there's one, two, three, there's four privately owned lights. Three of these lights were out. So I went ahead and called them, said, hey, are these still active? Yeah, okay, like that and turned it on, gave them lights. They were on that, that night. This is one of ours and this is on the parking lot, the one that, the parking lot that we own here. This is actually a directional light, like we have out back here. So this actually lights this whole parking lot up. I think this is when the beauty college had it, they did that for their students. Coming up here, we have, there's a light here on the corner by this strip mall here where the, or the office buildings are at. This is Mary Brock's building here, this is the.
Jordan's.
Jordan's Place. This actually has, there is a dusted on light here, here. Cindy Burke has floodlights all the way across the back of hers, plus a dusted on light here, plus there are floodlights on this, so this whole area here is lit. There's also floodlights on the back of, I guess Greg's old building. There's some here on the back. What we were proposing from this, this at night is well lit. The only area we had here was behind Ms. Boots' place and selling rigs back in here. And there is a pole here and then the PNC Bank has their ATM here, which does have a street light here. So we suggested that we do have a pole here that we can use. And so this is one spot I think would be beneficial that would hopefully light some of this area up here.
And you got an ATM machine there also?
Right, right here on PNC Bank, you can kind of see that little white spot there. And there's also a, right out next to the road, they have, they have a, I think it's about a 14-foot LED street light. Then going across the street, the church has two directional lights, one flooding this parking lot, the other one coming back here, coming down the alley behind the, I guess the power factor office here, on the corner here is one, then down behind Deerfields on Main, there is a street light here. The next, the one was where we. The next, the one was where we, would be a nice place to have behind Brewskis in this area here. There was a pole here, talked to Marvin, and wasn't sure because it has three, uh, three-phase transformers and got awful bunch of wires behind it, but he said that we, we could put one on there today, so. And then coming down to the corner, there's, one of our street lights is here on the corner right behind the old Neuburg building, which illuminates this whole area here. The other place I was looking at was, there actually are no lights down here, the, we have a nice, a good pole here, this area behind H and H Guns, and this area here is pretty dark. So this pole here lights right across from that, and we thought this would be a good, a good spot to want here. Ron has one here, the, uh, I guess it's the Missourian, has one back here, this whole area here is lit up, both these are new LED lights, this whole area here is good. The other one, this is the lot guy was talking about, the, uh, the new lot the city owns. There was a pole here, we already have a light here that lights up behind the, uh, the bar, lights this whole parking lot up here, which they were concerned about, but down there at night, this whole area is lit up. So we were thinking about putting another one here to kind of help with, with this and some of this here. We were talking about a directional one, but Marvin said that gets a little iffy with the people back here on the other side, these people here, because with those directional, they're four hundred watt, that puts out a lot, lot more light. So he said maybe we'll start with a smaller one here, if we have to, we might have to set a pole down here somewhere, maybe, then we could put a directional coming back. There's one, like I said, the one here behind the, uh, the bar, uh, is, is here, this lights up this. The other spot we had was down here by Alan Kimball's office, the, the big two-story thing here. There's a pole right here on the corner that would light all, all of this up in here, this whole back end. So that was, uh, I think if we put, there's, I think there's five, then going down the alley, looking for, this light here was behind Tim Collins's place, it was, it was, it was out, so I called about it, and it also wasn't one that had been, nobody had ever called it in, it was still, they were still paying for it, and been out for quite a while. So that one is, that one's turned on, and then right at the end here, there's one here at the, where the old, uh, bakery used to be. So that actually lights all that, that up. But these are the five that we proposed to, to add to the city, which...
Brad, after our meeting, I got a, was contacted by one of the members of the Methodist Church about placing a light.
Right, we went up and talked to those, there, there are four lights up, uh, up there now, there's one at the end of the foot ridge, there's one a hundred feet in front of there, there's one across the road, and also the parking lot light at the thing. The other one would have just, I mean, we told them, and they're, they're welcome, I called Cheryl down at Amherst, she says if they want a light, they would sure put her on their farm, but it'd be at their, their, their expense.
Right, okay. You were able to check into that?
Yeah, I could hear that.
So this is your recommendation on?
Yeah, but these, these five here, uh, the one behind Holster Building, the new parking lot, uh, behind Ron and, or H and H Guns, the one up here by Brewskis, and then the one back here behind Selling Ricks and Ms. Boots' place.
Mayor, I can make a motion that we approved the recommendation.
You got one more to discuss. I'll start about that.
Okay, and then the other thing that Guy looked into was the ability, actually started looking at it for ability for additional parking in the alleys, but then came up with another recommendation.
So, as I'm looking, going down the alleys, looking for, we're looking for parallel parking, someplace to park, and there is no room for parallel parking there. So then I'm sitting there watching the traffic going in and out, something coming up the alleys, something going down the alley. So I'm sitting there thinking it'd be a good idea to make the alleys one-way. So you can only go down the alley one-way, so you don't have traffic coming up, but in some places in the alley, where the trash truck can just barely fit through on itself, on its own, so that would be something to consider. The alley going one-way this way, and then the alley coming up going that way, that would relieve congestion. If somebody comes down and turns, they can still go down the alley and then come back and loop back up, and then come back down Main Street. But there is, there is quite a bit of congestion going on down there, just from sitting there looking for parallel parking, to see where we could have some room. You know, one guy comes up, and the next one comes down, somebody's got to move over to have room for them to pass. So that was just something I came up with, to make them one-way.
Yeah, I don't have any issue making them one-way, but I think we need to visit with the property owners before we do that, to let them know and see if they have a better idea, so a reason it wouldn't work.
Okay.
That we have to work around, but if, if no one has an issue with it, it makes sense to me.
Does whoever DC any issues with that?
No, it makes sense to me.
Would it maybe even be easier to keep certain things out of that area?
It definitely would be, yeah, and, you know, I, I think the one-way street and for the alleyways is a good idea, could help us out.
So, in light of what Almanok's comments are, and I agree with him, can we have either Guy's Department or Law Enforcement, uh, survey the property owners?
Make contact with them and see. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a need-to basis, because you got, you know, Brewskis, they get deliveries and, uh, through the alley, Ron does too, you got catering out of Ron's, so they're going to need to know which. Sure. One-way would work best for them, I think, same way on the other side, probably, I don't know, trash trucks would be a big issue on the other, on the south alleyway. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I can tell you from my standpoint, I think it's our responsibility to go to them, since we asked them to come down to a meeting. We need to include them in on that decision, we need to talk to them.
Exactly.
I know it's a little more burden on your staff, if we could have them speak to them.
That's okay, why don't we send out something?
Right.
That'd be fine.
Send a letter to those business owners and property owners, letting them know that this is something we're considering, and ask them to provide feedback.
Sure.
And to the Downtown Association.
If we could do that, if we could make it a little easier for us to come back to that and then look at the decisions.
Sure.
Thank you.
So have we done anything to upgrade patrols through the alley? Because one of the concerns was safety, obviously it's addressed partially with lighting, but is the, do the police make it happen sometimes of going down the alley as opposed to going down Main Street on occasions in the evenings particularly?
At, at night, I always did, I can always be, and the guys should be doing that, and if they not, if they are not, they will be. I will ask them to get, get to that.
Where the reported break-in was, is one of the most well-known areas that, that Brad surveyed.
But, you know, if you're used to seeing a car, a police car go through an area, you're more aware that something might come through here, so maybe that would defer something. And I think Ms. Burke mentioned, you know, she has, this time of year, she has staff leaving, you know, ten, ten-thirty, whatever it was, and, you know, that certainly would help, I think. Every time you see a police car, police presence, I think it sends a message.
Any other questions?
Do you want to take action on approval for the additional five lights this evening, or hold off, or?
I think, I think you go ahead.
What are you, Brad?
Security lighting, oh. Brad?
Maintenance and grounds directors, recommendation to add five lights.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Castello, signed by Alderman Shaw Harvey, roll call, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Castello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Kid.
Alderman Deloitte.
Yes. Motion passes six zero to approve the five security, or five...
Mayor, do we need to take any action on the parking lot?
There wasn't really a...
It'll be in budget.
Right, I was gonna say, we're gonna have to actually budget for the block. Good point to bring up though. All right, um, next we'll hear from Director of Operations and Finance Officer Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening are three change orders from demean construction. These all relate to the Aquatic Center complex. Two of them are items that we did not include originally in the bid, because we wanted to first see what the bid amount would be to make sure that we could afford in our funds to have them done by an outside contractor. But the first is over excavation related to the footings. They ran into bad soils at the footings, they had to take out another two-foot and replace that with lean concrete. The total of that change order is thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. The second is to add five double-headed pole lights with LEDs, these are the parking lot lights for the parking area at the Aquatic Center. Total of that change order is thirty thousand three hundred seventy dollars. The third is to install ten vandal-proof cameras and a DVR with hard drive and a rack. This will actually be in the Aquatic Center, providing security cameras for the exterior of the building and the parking lot. Total of that change order is sixteen thousand six hundred ninety dollars. Total of all three change orders is eighty thousand five hundred sixty dollars.
Any questions in the news?
No, just a question of the project in general, since Brad's locked me out of the park at night, I can't do anything anymore. How, how is the building coming along? Is it totally secured now and closed, or?
I don't believe so. I have not myself been over there in a couple of weeks, but Brady told me that they were putting up the wall structures, but I'm not sure those are finished.
No, the walls, the, the back wall, the south wall, the east wall, and the brick on the front and the north wall are done, now they're working, working on the panels.
Making good progress.
They're, they're coming along.
As long as weather holds up?
I was gonna say, were they impacting the lots with all the weather that went on?
Not really, they were putting panels on when those, nobody else was working, those guys were out standing those big panels up on the sidewalls and stuff, didn't seem to bother them, so. A little bit of rain had, the rain has slowed them down now, but...
So Terry, were these changes somewhat expected in the process?
We anticipated doing it as long as we had enough funds, depending on what the bid was that came in, adding them, we just didn't want to include them in the original bid just in case we didn't have enough funding, so these are things that need to be done.
You feel comfortable on funding?
Yes, we are still fine as far as what we've got.
Because really, the only thing we've really missed on this was, we had some structures on the, on the, on the road, then we have to put some additional change order for some roadwork, when we got, they got into the road, there were some spots that needed a little bit more.
There were soft spots that they found in the road, but they weren't significant in the overall scheme of it, so we're still really fine with our budget for the project.
And of course, the one change is the infamous Warren County clay overbuild on foundations, which we should expect it all along, right?
Exactly.
We dealt with that in the first pool, if you recall.
What was that total again, Terry, please?
Eighty thousand five hundred sixty dollars.
Any, any further questions? I'll, in a tentation motion to approve the demean construction change orders, number one, two, and three, in the amount of eighty thousand five hundred sixty dollars. So, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and give it to... You're getting it in stereo now. I'll give it to Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Deloitte, be correct?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Castello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes. Motion passes six zero.
My next item review is the summary of the major accomplishments for 2017. We had a lot of big things that were accomplished in this last year, most notably, the interchange project actually becoming underway and realistic and feasible. We got the land donated for, um, the right ways for the roadways, and were able to get the contract awarded, and got funding from MODOT for the cost of the construction inspections for seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So that allowed the project then to begin right away, and as the mayor said earlier, you can see by the aerial photos, it is well underway, still targeted to open in the fall of this year. We established the bulk sewer agreement with the Water District to be able to expand our boundaries related to annexation of property into the city, which before was a challenge since those customers had no sewer service. We established the long-term lease with a tribute to Veterans Memorial, and my understanding is that that project is going to come to fruition in the very near future. So that's a huge success for the city and them as well. We obtained voter approval for six point four million in A-plus rated general obligation bonds to accomplish the construction of the aquatics facility and the park improvements that also slated to open in the fall of this year. Worked out the Hickory Lick Road project and finished up those improvements using five hundred thousand dollars in neighborhood stabilization grant funds. Ninety-nine percent of the wastewater system Phase One project improvements are completed, which if you recall, adds additional sewer line capacity all the way from Water Street on the south out to the wastewater treatment plant on the north. Very successful project and is pretty much completed at this point, there's very little left. At some point in the future, we'll see Phase Two of that, which will be the same type of project on the east side. If you recall, voters approved enough bonds to do both pieces of that project, although we didn't issue the debt on all of it at the, at the first inception. The Police Department started the process to begin Kalia accreditation, and as of the end of the year, have accomplished fifteen policies and the training that's associated with putting those policies in practice by the end of the year. Entered agreement with St. Charles County Police Department to assign an officer to the Missouri Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. I think that has been a very positive thing for our community and RPD as well. And we opened twenty-three new businesses in the city of Moreton in 2017, and those twenty-three businesses provided a hundred and thirty-six new jobs in our city. So it was a busy, busy year. I think this year will be just as busy, and we will see just as many positive impacts as we did in 17.
I'm gonna, Terry, if you, you have this list printed out, we could share with the paper, because I think there's a lot of good stuff in here that, from my perspective, is would be of great interest to the public, because I don't think, unless you drive around like Greg says he does, you don't all see this stuff, but there's just so much stuff going on, and it's, it's a real tribute to the staff or, and you for being on top of these things and keeping them moving. I mean, it really is.
It is a team effort, all the way from top to bottom. We all worked toward accomplishing these things. And you're right, even in looking back, trying to put this list together, I would find things I was like, "Wow, I forgot we did that, wow, I forgot we did that." So it's really easy to miss when there's so much going on in the city. So we certainly will.
I think the twenty-three new businesses opened is dramatic.
It's phenomenal.
Yes.
It's the most we've seen in a very long time.
As I go through and reading each one of those, I say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah."
Were you wearing all those ribbon cuttings, Kevin?
Yeah, I've been to all of them. Who knows, Alderman Miller, he makes all of those.
The most available board member we have, right?
Twenty-four, seven.
There you go.
His motto is "Anywhere, anytime." He's told me that.
It's a good note.
And just a couple of other notes for you, reminder that we have a planning meeting next Tuesday, it starts at 5:00 PM here at City Hall, so we'll start our planning for the upcoming year and update last year's plan to make sure we're still on target. And then asking for approval, I've spoken by email with Mary Lou Rainwater from Truesdale. They have agreed to take over the IPA Park sign and maintenance of that. I told her that I would ask the board if you all would approve us moving forward with taking the steps we need to do to get that accomplished, which basically entails getting a legal description. And then once we've done that, we'll ask the attorney to prepare the document to actually turn over to the city of Truesdale. turn over to the city of Truesdale that piece of property and the one adjacent to it. There's actually a thirty-foot strip that got missed somehow when the road was turned over. So, we will turn all of that property over with your approval to the city of Truesdale and be out from under the maintenance question that always seems to arise over there. So, if you all are good with that, we'll proceed and hopefully have that four-year approval next meeting.
We need a formal motion on it.
I just need to know that you all are in agreement that that's correct.
Is anybody not in favor of it?
The quicker the better.
I think everybody's in favor, so go ahead and proceed.
Okay, we'll try to have that for you next meeting. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from zoning officer and building commissioner, Jack Hannah.
First item I have is the monthly billing and code enforcement report. And then, following up with Alden Castello's comments in January, we did issue six single-family residence residential permits. Two of them was in Field of Dreams, and four of them was at Forest Ridge. So, that is, I agree, very, very exciting. We've had other builders recently get additional plans mastered, that they're definitely looking to keep popping basements in, so I think it's gonna be common to have multiple homes under construction, which is completely different than what we've had in the past.
That per the discussion we had with the builder here last month?
Jeff Jaeger?
Jaeger.
Yes, Mr. Jaeger had four permits issued to him in January.
Yeah, no, he talked about the multiple master...
Yeah.
And to add to what Jack's comments are, there were in Field of Dreams, obviously, several homes that were recently completed because they didn't have grass, so that straw down, and some were not occupied. So, I think I counted a total of eight that were, were obviously very recent, probably within the last ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Jack, do you anticipate if this continues, I mean, where are we at on staffing? We've talked about, you know, concerns of trying to push down some of the authority so that we cut back the timeframe that it takes a builder or a developer to get an answer. Usually, to get the answer they want, I think, in most cases, but the process is, is, I think, what is costly to them. Where do you feel you're at in terms of, let's say that this pace continues on the inspections and the review of plans? Are you...
I believe it definitely needs to be part of the upcoming budget discussions.
I mean, there are a couple of us here that remember sixty, seventy building permits a month, and I just recall that was a very, it was a good time, but it was a hard time to keep up with. And I think our review process is much more complete now than it was before.
And the master plan procedure, since we've adopted that, is outstanding. Not every time, but there's occasions, it's common where a builder will drop off a permit application for something that's mastered, and if he doesn't get his permit issued that day, it's the next day. So, that is greatly streamlined.
Any other questions?
Next item is the proposed revisions to existing Section 425 signed regulations, ADM-93.
This will be a bill later on in the agenda.
Yes, sir. And then, the last...
So, when you did the presentation, you talked about changes to the overlay district?
Yes, sir.
And that's part of this also?
Yes, that's the main change. Previously, it was from where the new interchange is going up to the east side of the Outlet Mall, and this new proposal extends it from, all the way up from where it was, all the way up to Highway forty-seven, that whole corridor along the south side of Interstate Seventy.
So, there was no real width change? It was just really...
The length, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Good, Jack.
And then, the last item I have is, did the research and got the answers for some of the questions that came up during the work session. I don't know if you've looked through them or if you want me to point out the couple that I was specifically asked to look at. One was for the fire rating, fire resistant rating for well-suffering townhomes, increase the two-hour fire rate of beer if it's not sprinkled. I met with Chief OMB, and he is adopting and wanting to keep the code as written. The other one was regarding the engineered floor joists. And on that one, too, the fire chief, they are adopting it specifically as it's written in the code. The question regarding smoke detectors in the garage, that's not a requirement. There was a question regarding the different R-values for the energy section of the code, and Wensfield, Wright City, Troy are all adopting and using the same R-factors as 2009, so it does not allow any different or any additional cost to the builders. I recommend we do the same thing. And then, on the arc fault protection required on fifteen and twenty-amp circuits, Wensfield is adopting the entire section of code on arc fault. Troy deleted the entire section of code on arc fault, and Wright City is adopting it for the bedrooms only, and I would recommend that we adopt it for the bedrooms only. And then, the last one that I was to research was for tamper-resistant outlets. Troy has deleted the entire section. Wensfield and Wright City recommend, are adopting the entire section, and I recommend that we adopt the entire section regarding the tamper-resistant outlets.
Is that the issue where one of the builders told us that that's one of the more significant requests that they get to go back and remove those because of the problem with them? Or is that the arcing?
That was the arc. Yeah, they wanna replace those because they keep tripping.
But there was one where they talked about the difficulty of plugging a device in, and that's where they...
I think that's a tamper-resistant.
Well, the tamper-resistant, they're spring-loaded, so you have to put something, both prongs at the same time to keep a kid from putting a key in one side or the other.
I mean, I guess we can require them and change them out, but that's all now, I guess.
It's a safety item, and...
Did you require them for bedroom only, correct?
Right.
So, Jack, as I understood in talking to the two builders we had here, it really wasn't so much that those items aren't that much more expensive, are they?
No, it's about fifty cents apiece. So, if you have seventy-five outlets in your entire house, you're talking fifty bucks. So, it's, and I did some extra research, and approximately twenty-four hundred children a year, they say, suffer from shock or related burns from putting things in outlets. So, does that mean it's gonna save a kid every day? No, but...
Well, again, I mean, I think if you follow the pattern of Wright City and Wensfield and adopt the entire section, and if the homeowner changes because they don't like it, that's their business. It's on them if their kid sticks something out.
I mean, if it were, you know, a thousand-dollar item for a home or something, but it sounds like it's kind of become the standard, and the cost doesn't appear to be significant at all, so.
Any other questions, or...
And in reality, Troy may have deleted that entire section because Lincoln County has no code.
Right.
There is no building permits, there's no plans submitted, there's no plan review, there's no inspection, so it's a completely different atmosphere than here. So, that, you know, I can't speak for the city of Troy, but that might be why they deleted it.
Are we having more code meetings, or are we looking to approve?
No, we're looking to approve the changes to 2015. Any other questions or comments?
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the changes that's presented. Go ahead.
I will entertain a motion to approve the changes to 2015 IRC code adoption summary.
So moved.
Second motion made by Alden Ock, signed by Alden Schellharry. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Castello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Schellharry?
Yes.
Alden Castello?
That is it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from maintenance and grounds director, Brad Buzikris.
Good evening. You have my monthly report, and I think you also have my annual tree report, too. Still just catching up all our maintenance and stuff. I think we've got all the mowers done, we've finished the weed eaters yesterday, so I think we're down to a few blowers, and I think we've got everything ready to go again, so ready for the grass to start growing.
It won't be long.
Any questions? Question here.
A few other notes while you're all looking at that. The, if you all have been driving around, the Forest Ridge subdivision, all the lights are on now. We had some problems with a few of them that we turned on. Forest Ridge is the one, Rooney Park, we got, we gotta have all those lights turned on. We had a problem with a couple of them, we got those fixed, so the new residents out there really appreciate it, so. Also, the dog park, we staked it out the other day, and bids are due in, I think, March the eighth for that, so we're getting close on that. Also, the disc golf course, I think we finally got it all laid out and tweaked, and just waiting on one gentleman's gonna come out and tell us what brush he wants cut and what he don't. Maybe we'll have you come out sometime, Gary, and take a look.
Yeah, I'll go out there with my disc and throw a few around, and you can get a hold of the tree and get them out for it.
The way it looks, it is gonna be a tough course, so I don't know much about disc golf, but you all must have a lot better control of them than I'm...
I think we just found your new sport then, didn't we? Found a new sport for you now.
Well, but you know, it was interesting when we were meeting with the committee that does this, that's really quite the sport. I mean, they have tournaments, and Missouri is known as one of the bigger states for having these things, and they'll draw thousands of people into Kansas City to play disc golfs. So, maybe that's something we can look at eventually, is getting involved in that, kind of like we get involved in having ball teams come out to the park, disc golf, bring people into town, play our course, and I think...
They jump in our pool at sports.
Yeah, that too. But hopefully it showers, isn't it?
No questions on that. Next, I have the annual plumbers' bid tabs. We only had two bid this year, and I'm recommending we go with Michelson Plumbing.
Any questions on the bids? Entertained a motion to award the general plumber bid to Michelson Plumbing, the best bid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Castello, signed by Alden Miller. Roll call.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Schellharry?
Yes.
Alden Castello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Next, I have the electrician bid tabs. We only had one person put in a thing for this, and that was Roger OMB Sales and Service. I recommend we go with him. I think he's been there for the last three years, I guess.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Real quick, there was, I think there was some added language to this, wasn't there?
Included in the service agreement that we have been signed is a requirement to stay in all into, all of the municipal codes and requirements to stay in compliance, so it will be the same language that was in the previous year's agreement.
Got it. All right. If you don't mind, I'll entertain a motion to award the general electrician bid to Roger OMB Sales and Service with the addition language, additional language to the agreement that ensures compliance with all city ordinances.
So moved. I'll give you a second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Alden Castello, signed by Alden Miller. Roll call vote.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Schellharry?
Yes.
Alden Castello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Brad. Next, we'll hear from public works director, Guy Jiebers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First time I have a monthly report. Couple stormwater projects been completed on Northwest Street and Steinhagen Road. We did some work on the guardrail out at the wastewater treatment plant. Had a water main repaired on Steinhagen and Flora, and we had eight sewer blockage reports called, five are on private and two are on city side.
Any questions or comments on this report?
Next item I have is an approval for BFA Engineering for legal drawing and staking for Highway forty-seven's south sidewalk. That's a sidewalk that's missing on the south side of town that's gonna stake out the six remaining properties that'll show the property owners the location of where the sidewalk's gonna go. That's been a big issue. Nobody could pinpoint exactly where the sidewalk's gonna go. Work with the existing MODOT right away to see if, maybe we can use some of MODOT's right away to get up farther, and that's a total cost not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars. And we've been working with the, with some of the people there. We have two verbal yes, we'll, we won't, we'll go with it. I think one lady wanted a tree replaced, and so we've been working that out prior to that. The other, we have four other locations that most of them wanna know where they're exactly going.
So, the visual aid will help them see.
Yes, so that's our goal with that there.
All right. Any questions on that?
Entertained a motion to approve the engineering proposal on South Highway forty-seven sidewalks with BFA Engineering in the amount not to exceed forty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Schellharry, seconded by Alden Delloy. Roll call vote.
Alden Delloy?
Yes.
Alden Schultz?
Yes.
Alden Schellharry?
Yes.
Alden Castello?
Yes.
Alden Ock?
Yes.
Alden Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Next item I have is a change order from Cochran Engineer for Roosevelt Stormwater Improvement. They had to do twelve field locations to locate sewer services. If you've been down Roosevelt, that ditch is deep, and we had a spot dig, and they had to go out and shoot a grade for that. So, that's a change order of one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. By the end of next week, we will have the preliminary plans for that, and if we approve the preliminary plans, then from two weeks from there, we'll have final plans and then going out for bid. So, that's kind of the timeline we're at with that there. He said, he made it sound like I should have the preliminary by next week, and if there's not a bunch of changes, then we can go ahead and proceed with that.
I've had a couple residents along Roosevelt wanting to know if we're only gonna go from Flora up to Man, or why was everything marked all the way up the street to Wabash? Looked like there was some, somebody went through and did some...
It's however, when they, when they did it, did the surveys and call for locates, they might have just did the whole street and been done with it.
Okay.
And then, so, and then they put the flags in, but they're trying to tell the guy to go down two hundred feet, they just probably told him from here to here, mark entire area.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Cochran Engineering change order proposing
number one, for Roosevelt Avenue Stormwater Improvements in the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, seconded by Aldman Castello. Roll call vote.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Anything else, Guy?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Lieutenant of the Warranted Police Department, Brandon Weber.
So on the police report, our, for January of eighteen, our calls are slightly down compared to last year in two thousand and seventeen. However, if you go back to November of seventeen, you can see the calls are actually up from November and December, mainly due to manpower. You know, our guys don't have the time to do the self-initiated activities. So they're responding to calls and any paperwork generated from those calls, they're handling that. They don't have the time for as much of the self-initiated stuff as they do when they're fully staffed. You guys, I believe the board has a breakdown of the calls. If there's any questions about that breakdown, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
I'm kind of curious, you know, if you read through the drug incident report, so when we have an issue like the one call that was on January fourth, small amount of marijuana found, Casey's parking lot seized and destroyed, or real question, what, it was on the twelfth, I'm sorry, the twelfth marijuana one hitter was located during a search, it was seized and destroyed. What happens in case where there's small marijuana? Was that person given a warrant or?
They, most likely in that incident, officer used a little bit of discretion. They were compliant with, he asked for consent, they gave him consent. They found a small one hitter. Instead of charging him with paraphernalia, they used their discretion and they didn't get a charge, gave him a warning pretty much.
Okay. I'm curious.
I think the drug-related, their drug-related activity by our officers is up. They're seizing more and charging more here than that, that I've seen. So like seven charges in January, we're already at seven charges, three for this month, for the month of February. So it seems to be up. That discretion is not used on felony when felony substances are found or paraphernalia related to felonies. They're not going to use that same discretion. It's mainly marijuana.
Lieutenant, I got a question. What is a, on one nineteen, what is marijuana shake? That's, that's a new one on me.
Yeah, it's going to be what's left over from the bud, leafy material. It's not, it's not the bud, it's, you know, stems, it could be leaf.
Tubalobal is remnants.
I haven't heard of it.
Don't feel bad, Mike. I thought a one hitter was a baseball term.
It's a generation.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering how you drink a marijuana shake, right?
Yeah, they might.
We don't have them here.
I'd be a little concerned if you guys did know what they were.
You got a what?
I'd be a little concerned if you guys did know what these terms were.
Okay.
Any further questions about the breakdown of those calls?
No, it could lead into something else.
Stop where you're at.
You may not want to answer questions.
They've increased their traffic enforcement through, over the last month. So that's up significantly. Some of that's due to the issues that were up on North forty-seven, but they've increased traffic enforcement throughout the city. Most likely that is related to the drug cases they're making, why that's going up too. CID Detective Unger still, you know, he's still providing a quality service to the city. I think he, his solve rate was sixty-two percent in the month of January, unsolved thirty-seven. That's a decent solve rate. It's better than decent, actually. It's really good.
Yes.
So he's doing what he does, closing cases. And we just, Detective Hanner just started Monday. He was in training all last week. So he's going to get a little help in the Detectives Bureau. Should help out also.
Which is much needed and I'm sure much appreciated by Detective Unger.
Yes. Any questions about the CID report?
Is that part of a, Lieutenant, is that part of a system that the city has purchased, the reporting?
No, he keeps track of his numbers through a spreadsheet and then we tally them every month.
Very impressive. Easy to read and understand.
So, and then as far as the police report, that's about it. That's about all I have unless there's any more questions related to that. The second thing I have is I am seeking approval of five new policies. One is roll call, found property policy, death notification, mobile data communication systems, report submission and approval.
Which there can go hand in hand with the CLIA that we spoke about earlier.
Yes, they're all.
Which is a.
Written for one of the CLIA certifications.
Which has, as the news media has pinned it down at St. Charles Police Department, it's a pretty big, pretty big thing that we're moving towards. I mean, that was a, that was a huge issue. And it's, it's a great policy-driven department after it's through. So.
Shows we're putting the best practices in, in place. So it's very important.
Therefore, the citizens get good quality enforcement from us through those.
Yep.
So excellent. Any questions on any of those policies? Entertain a motion to approve the roll call, found property, death notification, mobile data, communication systems, and report submission and approval policies as submitted. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Shelharry, seconded by Alden Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shelharry?
Yes.
Aldman Castello?
Yes.